I'd like to call to order the Common Council meeting for October 28th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Attendance roll call.
Alder Person's Wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Bryce.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Dilghi.
Here.
Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public meeting?
Yep.
Public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law on Friday, October 24th, 2025.
Public comments. Speakers will be limited to making comments related on all agenda items excluding closed session items related to employment and labor issues. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, per agenda item. There is no discussion by or with the Common Council during public comment. To speak during public comment at the Common Council meetings, complete the attached form, and this form must be submitted to the clerk, which it has been. We have two in, and we'll start with Scott Dickman.
I don't know if that microphone is on or...
It's on.
It's on.
Yeah. Just needs to be closer as well.
How's that? Better?
Go ahead.
All right. Do you want my name and address?
No, we're good.
Scott Dickman, S-69, W-17945, Muskego Drive, Muskego 53150. And my comments tonight are regarding the Hillendale project. So I put this together so I wouldn't forget anything that I wanted to mention. So first of all, regarding the Hillendale project, not sure what will be discussed this evening that's on the agenda. However, individuals sometimes contact me with questions related to the city items. They brought to my attention that the mayor had put something on social media a few months ago, and a few words at a council meeting that he wanted to be transparent about the Hillendale project. It seems that it took quite some time for this air to be disclosed. So it makes me kind of wonder a little bit what other additional financial decisions are not voted on by the council in an open forum. And I understand that not even financial, not every financial item needs to be voted on, except if it does not meet a certain threshold. However, I believe this is above that threshold. I did submit some requests, an open records request, about how much money and where the money had come from, and the air was approximately $1,001.1, roughly then there. And I also inquired on what council meeting the vote took place to reappropriate those funds for the project. And as of now, I have not received that answer, nor have I received an answer with respect to where it states either locally, county, federally, statewide, as to where that vote would have to take place. So if I'm wrong with that, you know, I would like to know. But anyway, it was basically brought up that there was a closed session, and that's okay and understandable. But the financial piece of this is what concerns me. Even without the, in an employee situation, we could have brought out to the public the shortfall of those funds, where they came from, and how we paid for that in the end. So I understand the money has already been spent. However, I believe the thing to do is for the mayor and the council to explain with full transparency in a council meeting what happened, aside from employee issues, which doesn't matter, and bring forward a resolution regarding the utilization of the funds for the approval and vote by the common council for Hillendale project. And you may ask, well, this project's finished and paid for. What's the big deal of all of this? You know, the big deal is that, you know, if this would have been brought to everyone's attention when it took place by the mayor of the council, none of this would have had to be questioned. So it would end up being a formality, but the formality can be set, can be done and set the record straight. If it were to happen again, let the people know with full transparency at the time, not three, four, five months, a year later, you know, just take care of it when it happens. And I think everyone could respect the fact that there was an air made. So I would really appreciate and ask this council to bring a motion, to create a resolution, second, and have a vote and just discuss it. And I understand that some of you were not part of that council at the time, but you are members now, and to do the right thing by the people of the city of Muskego. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't need your address.
Kathy Chivari, West 129, South 8837, Boxhorn Reserve Drive, of course, Muskego. I did prepare some comments, but after that, I don't think I have to say them. I think, and also, I was just thinking that you are all ethical elected officials, so I trust that you will do the right thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Roszewski. I'm a citizen of Muskego at West 185, South 9570, Parker Drive, Muskego. Speaking here on behalf of my own family, who lives in the city, works in the city, and behalf of other employees in the city here. We have some concerns regarding the decisions being made here today and the last meeting regarding the insurance and the 2026 budget. I've been an employee for the city for just under 25 years, and have been directly affected by decisions of different mayors and different councils long before most of you acquired your positions. I speak tonight specifically regarding the insurance changes that are being made for employees for the city. For decades, while being employed here, the city has consistently negotiated terms of wages and insurance, and throughout the majority of the negotiations, the city leaders have openly stated that the employees might not have higher wages here, but they have good insurance. City employees to get, city employees do not get sales bonuses. They do not get commissions, as they do in the private sector. They get an hourly rate that the family has to be comfortable with hour by hour. For decades, the city has saved money, and for the majority of my career, employees at the police department specifically have been below averages compared to other employees at other police departments, in the same positions at similar departments. To sum it up, insurance has been good, which we've been grateful for, but wages have been lacking for decades. Now, the city is using phrases such as "it's going to go bankrupt if they don't make changes with insurance," but that's truly a hyperbole. The city has paid a consultant to save the money, and they have found changes with the health insurance plan that will save the city money, but it is being done on the backs of the hardworking, dedicated employees with top-tier professionalism. I agree with Alderwoman Bryce that if you were going to compare insurance plans to other municipalities, then you should be comparing the wages to other municipalities. Last year, the city did a salary study, which indicated that ranges for non-representative employees was lacking, and that was not competitive. As the mayor said in the last meeting, they moved the ranges, which allows an employee to work up through the range to make more money. The problem with this, they moved the ranges, but they didn't actually substantially move many of the employees' wages as they should have. It sounds good to move the ranges, but unless you put the employees appropriately within the range, it's not actually positively affecting the employee like it should be. An example is there are several of us at the police department who met the top of our ranges before. They moved the ranges, but they didn't move us to the top of the range where we should have been. They put us somewhere within the range. I've been a lieutenant for 12 years before the salary study, and I was not placed, even though I was at the top of my range, I wasn't placed there. I'm not the only employee that is affected. The reality is the chief of police on down is grossly underpaid, as are most of our command staff compared to other departments. My point is, as the alderman said, if you're going to compare health insurance, you should be comparing everyone's wages and putting them there appropriately. The chief is one of the most impactful chiefs in southeast Wisconsin, and the city saves money on him every single day. I would ask that each alderman take a look at these ranges and understand the continual wage compression that is occurring. Regarding the health insurance specifically, I'm probably going to take the advantage of the family advantage plan, as it makes sense for my family. I think this is a great option that the city has provided because I have the ability to do that. Other employees within the city do not have that option because they either don't have a spouse, or their spouse's insurance does not allow them to go on their insurance. For those employees and the employees that have serious health issues, I can't speak loud enough. These decisions you're making have caused tremendous stress among employees in a profession that is already struggling with keeping good employees and hiring good employees. A family that has medications that can't get generic medications because of their specific health issue, this health insurance change, the way I understand it, is extremely impactful. For someone who needs medication that isn't generic, it's going to be costly for them. For someone who has serious medical concerns already, they are now going to have to deal with increased copays for specialty doctors. The reality is, I believe the city leaders could have made an impactful change to the health insurance plan by adding the family advantage plan, saving money, but not doing it on the backs of the employees. Last year, the city postponed raises on the backs of the employees. This year, it is increasing the insurance expenses on the backs of the employees, even though as a city resident, it appears my taxes are going down. The consultant who was hired to save the city money continuously said that the current insurance plan is Cadillac Plan, which is better than other municipalities, and changes should be made. I'm speaking here today to let you know that there are real people behind these changes, and every situation is different. For some, it will have little, no effect, and others, it will be big effects. I have thoroughly enjoyed working at this police department for the last 24 years. I've also enjoyed living here for that same amount of time, and wouldn't want to raise my family anywhere else. That being said, if you saw the day-in-and-day-out professionalism, hard work in organizations within the city, not just the police department, I believe you should be pushing the limits and compensating the employees through an entire package that makes people want to come to the city, not question if they should retire here or not. I ask tonight that you defer this vote for the next meeting or discuss tonight to reconsider your health insurance package. I'm not asking you to look over everything again. I'm asking for you to save money as a city by enacting the family advantage plan and choosing not to raise deductibles, copays, and medication costs. Thank you.
Public hearing. A public hearing to... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's not on the agenda. We can't. No, they can contact any one of us. We'd be glad to talk to them, but...
Okay, so they just have to come back?
Or just contact us. Yeah, it's not on the agenda. Sorry. Communications in the mayor's office. The only thing I do have is, this past week, FEMA did notify impacted communities that this stage Level 2 aid for actual communities to be reimbursed was, is denied. The state is planning on appealing that. In addition to the appeal, it does, the Wisconsin, Wisconsin has a Wisconsin Disaster Fund, which for a lot of our, a lot of our road damage and debris pickup and all that does qualify for that, so we should be able to maintain for that. We still want the, I'm hopeful that the FEMA funds are appealed and won. I realize this, the federal government cannot, they're not a blank check. They cannot write out checks for everything. I just think that this one should qualify. This is a once-in-a-generational type of event, and I just hope they take a closer look at it. Muskego was hit much harder than most communities in Waukesha County. I would say much more than any other community in Waukesha County. So I am hopeful that they take a look at it. But like I said, the state does have Wisconsin Disaster Fund that is set up for this. The downside on that is it does not, it will not impact any losses you have to a utility, which would be our list stations, but Gold Drive and the work that we're looking at there and all the debris pickup and everything else should qualify under that. We will keep you abreast of information as we go forward. If for some reason that the funding does completely fall through, we will come back to council and give you options, but we do have, we have plenty of fund balance available for situations like that. That's why we do have fund balance. We're hopeful we don't have to use it for this, but I just wanted to let everyone know that. I am thankful that they, in Waukesha County alone, that FEMA did dole out about $14 million to about 2,000 people. That was my main concern going into it, because there's people that lost everything. And, you know, at least it's not a complete reimbursement for them, but it gives them something. So we'll keep abreast of how things go moving forward. Public... But I, you can't talk about anything that's not on the agenda. I'm sorry.
And so I just wanted to actually tell you that also SBA is also here with FEMA, and this is what I'm here for. I can take two minutes of your time, just so you know that we have provided funding out to $20 million, and actually also survivors here in Wisconsin. So I just wanted to...
Okay, thank you. Public hearing. A public hearing to consider the petition of Tim Nepreth of Wellspring Construction on behalf of Wiza Investments LLC, Global Precision, to rezone the following area, tax key number 2228-999-005 and 2228-999-014 slash South 84, West 19120, Enterprise Drive, and vacant lot to the east from M2 General Industrial District to PD Planned Development District based on M2 General Industrial District for the purpose of bringing the existing building into zoning compliance with a 14-foot rear offset allowance, which will allow a compliant addition to be placed onto the existing building. And Adam, what do you got on this?
Thank you, Mayor. So as was mentioned by the mayor, this is a rezoning request from M2 to a planned development district. As a reminder, planned development districts are something that are used nationwide. It's basically a zoning district in the city where a developer takes a base district that we already have. In this case, they're asking for the M2, which is already there. They can just request some modifications to it for various reasons, and then the council can choose if that's appropriate. We have over 50 or 60 of these in the city. Most of them apply to residential properties, probably because we have much, many more residential developments, but they have been used before for industrial and commercial properties. We do have at least one or two others in the industrial or business park already. So in this case, there's an existing property that Global Precision Group owns. They also own a vacant lot next door. Their plan is they would love to combine those properties. Business is good for them. They're growing as a business. They want to be able to expand. And so their plan was to combine the properties, give them one nice big uniform property, and expand the building eastward. In doing their due diligence, they realized that when this building was built many, many years ago, we can only assume it was probably a construction error. The building was built 14.7 feet away from the lot line instead of 15. So inches too close to the lot line, which older construction sometimes in Mason was off a little bit or something like that. This isn't the first time we've ever experienced something like this. So after doing some research and looking at different options, staff suggestion actually was that a planned development seemed like the most appropriate way to be able to bring this building into compliance with the current code. So as part of the planned development, they want to follow all of the normal M2 requirements. The only thing they're asking for a change for is basically saying in this specific district, which will apply to this one big combined property, would be that they're allowed to be 14 feet from the rear instead of 15. What that does is that brings their existing building into compliance, which would then allow them to expand on it without having any kind of financial burdens or restrictions. If they wanted to expand a building that was non-compliant, they're very, very limited on what they can put into the material costs, which would make this project not feasible, and the business wouldn't be able to expand here. So that's really, the planned development that they're asking for to rezone to would be based on the M2 district, and the only change they're asking for would be a 14-foot rear offset being allowed.
Thank you.
So, Adam, they're looking to do an addition, and it'll be at 14 feet instead of 15 feet?
The existing building will kind of be allowed to remain as it is, which the 14 will make it compliant. New building, I think the proposal is actually a little bit further away even, but it would definitely be no closer than 14.
Okay, but I'm saying, so we're making an exception here. And the point I'm going to bring up is that if we do a DPW building, whatever we do over there, and it was mentioned that we don't want to do exceptions, here's a fine example of how industrial parks have exceptions.
Stick on the agenda, though.
What's that?
The DPW is a completely separate agenda.
Okay.
And setback and offsets.
But we're looking to make an exception here, and we do that for other people, and we've done it in the past, so we can do it in the future. Is that how I should phrase it?
A planned development only can change zoning requirements, so that strictly things like setbacks, offsets, lot size. Has nothing to do with like architecture, building size. That's a very different process, not at all similar to a planned development. Not even slightly different.
Okay, we'll talk about that at a different stage, but anyway. You get my drift here.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to be heard for or against this proposal? If you, if there is, please step forward, state your name and address, and speak your piece. Anyone? Going once? Twice? I declare this public hearing closed. Next. To hear any citizen on the proposed 2026 budget, before we do that, Jenny's going to read the...
Let me just play slide show. Good evening. Tonight's public hearing will walk through a budget overview for the city's operations, which include the general fund, debt service, special revenue, and capital project funds. This budget was built collaboratively with department heads and the mayor, and then reviewed by the committee of the whole before being presented to you tonight. The city's focus remains on maintaining one of the lowest tax rates in southeastern Wisconsin, investing in public safety and infrastructure, and retaining quality employees, all while staying within the state's levy limits and preserving our AA1 bond rating. This slide provides a financial summary of the city funds as outlined in the budget overview, including 2025 and 2026 budgeted revenues and expenditures, along with the net change for each fund, general, special revenue, debt service, and capital. As noted, net new construction is 1.17%. It's slightly lower than last year's at 1.82%. With inflation near 2.9%, every budget decision this year required a careful balance between maintaining service levels and keeping taxes low. The proposed estimated mill rate, which is subject to review by the Department of Revenue, is $3.06 per $1,000, a reduction of about 20% from last year. Of the total, $14.7 million tax levy, about $12 million in funds, expenditures for basic operations in the general fund, 2.2 million supports principal and interest payments, and $395,000 goes toward active tax district increments. For over 25 years, Muskego's tax rate has followed a steady downward trend, and the 2026 proposal continues that trajectory. The next two slides summarize the general fund revenue categories totaling just under $18.9 million. Most of that, about $12.2 million, comes from property taxes, with the remainder from state aid, permits, and service charges. Overall, revenue growth is modest, about 0.4% from 2025. Following the revenue slides are the general fund expenditures, reflecting an increase of about $70,000. Public safety remains our largest category at about $9.6 million, followed by public works and general government. Staffing levels remain steady, with continued focus on retention and competitive pay. Police union negotiations are ongoing. Key 2026 expenditures, expenditure changes include a 2% cost of living increase in January, with another potential 2% in July for non-represented staff, a $50,000 increase for operations in the Test Corners Volunteer Fire Department, and a 1.2% decrease in health insurance costs, saving about $32,000. The debt service slide highlights the debt service fund, which accounts for principal and interest payments on all general obligation debt. Funding comes from property taxes, TIF reimbursements, the conservation fund, and interest earnings. As of this year, the city's total principal balance is $26 million, leaving a debt capacity limit of $251 million or 90.22% available. That represents a $2 million reduction over the prior year due to the final payment on a TID borrowing and other scheduled payments. The city continues to maintain a strong AA1 bond rating and a healthy general fund balance of about $9.7 million, ensuring strong reserves for the future. Looking ahead, future borrowing may increase modestly to support road projects and water utility relay main replacements. The special revenue chart gives a overview of the special revenue funds. For 2026, total expenditures are projected at $3.2 million, about $1.4 million lower than last year. This reduction reflects the final TID debt payment in 2025 and the completion of the Park Arthur Field 4 project. The remaining expenditures support park improvements and ongoing tax increment district activities. The 2026 capital projects budget totals approximately $1.88 million. All items are fully funded by landfill host fees. These investments support a range of infrastructure and equipment, projects across information technology, public safety, and public works, ensuring our facilities and services remain modern, efficient, and safe. This concludes the 2026 budget public hearing presentation. All proposed balanced budgets, including the tax levy, will be considered for approval by the common council this evening. Thank
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone that would like to be heard on this proposal, please step forward, give your name and address, and speak your piece.
Still on. Kathy Chivari, West 129, South 8837, Boxhorn Reserve Drive. I drafted this up so I don't forget anything. As elected officials, it's often said that it's a thankless job. I want to say thank you. But your thanks really is knowing that you're doing the right thing and doing a good job, including, but not limited, being transparent. Council's core responsibility, that you already know, includes police, fire, rescue, and roads. It's common for cities to have an annual road budget. It's unfortunate that ours has been cut in half in this budget, from $750,000 to $375,000 to balance the budget. Splitting the pay increase in the year is a tool that's used in this budget. It's been used in past budgets, and it's a good tool to help balance a budget without putting it on the backs of the employees, i.e., not giving a raise. If you're not following the city of New Berlin, you probably should. They are facing a multimillion-dollar budget shortfall, and they will be facing a referendum, I believe estimated for 2027, to address deferred road maintenance. You should also familiarize yourself with the landfill agreement pages that spell out how the funds can be used. It's often said that the funds are intended for the extras. The contract requires 10%, as you probably know, to go to the conservation fund, another 10% to the parks dedication fund, and all remaining funds can be used only for capital expenditures at the discretion of the council, nothing specific. And if, and if it would have been true that it was strictly for extras, then a plow truck, a fire truck, and many other things would not have been paid out of the landfill. So I just kind of want to clarify that, because that's something that comes up frequently. I also want to point out that at all the meetings, I'm sure you've seen me, the Baird representative, I believe his name was Kevin, and then the mayor's proposed budget memo states that future borrowing does not bind future councils. I believe that's true and also a little not true. It's true that future councils will have to vote on each borrowing, but now that the road budget has been reduced, future councils will be in a position where they will probably have to borrow just to maintain the roads at the current level that was in the previous budget. Additionally, the Baird rep stated $5 million borrowing every other year would not impact taxes. I've never heard of a financial advisor predict the future in that way. There's too many variables, interest rates and other situations. So that's what I heard. If I heard it wrong, I went back and listened again. Just, that's what I heard. But borrowing is needed at this time to begin to address the deferred road maintenance. The first PowerPoint presentation on roads, the needs of the roads was done, I think, in 2019 or 2020, to bring awareness to the council. And since then, I think there's about $1 million out of the landfill that was dedicated to the roads. And then, of course, now, the budget's cut in half. A good planning session based on all of this to discuss priorities would be in order well enough in advance of the next budget. So just want to thank you for your service and your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Going once? Twice? I declare this public hearing closed. Consent agenda. Approval of the common council minutes from September 9th, 2025, approval of the common council minutes from September 23rd, 2025, and voucher approval.
Move to approve in growth.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. New business. The first item, Resolution 0602025, has been pulled, so we won't be considering that tonight. Resolution 0612025, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with WCA Group Health Trust for the provision of health insurance in plan year 2026. Can I get a motion at least to get it on the floor, guys?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Discussion.
Anyone want to go first?
This is what we talked about at the last meeting?
Yes.
Your recommendations?
Correct.
Basically approving all of your recommendations?
That's what was agreed upon last meeting, yes.
Okay. I just have one question then, just after.
Kate, are you, just in case there's questions I can't answer.
Oh, Kate is here. Yeah, here it is. Here's the. Could you just explain to me how the prescriptions are changing? This is a little bit, again, like I said, the sheet. I don't remember ever getting an email with you. You were going to send me an email with all of this kind of explained better, but I didn't get anything, so.
Sure. So the prescription changes include no changes to the generic level of prescription drugs. The proposed are to move from a preferred, $25 for preferred is what we currently pay. We're going to move that to $40. For non-preferred, we currently pay $55 per prescription. We're going to recommend move that to 80. And then for specialty meds, we're moving from, I believe it was 55 to 25 percent up to a total of $250 per prescription.
A maximum of $250.
Yeah, maximum of $250.
So what does that mean, the maximum? That anything over 250 is?
Correct. That's the cap.
Okay, so they wouldn't have to pay more than 250?
Correct.
Okay. And was there a cap before?
Yeah, there was a defined amount. I believe it was, I'm trying to read my notes here, I think it was 55.
It was $55 previously.
Yeah, $55 per prescription.
So the prescriptions is not changing all that much? Are there certain specialty things that are not included that could be a real burden for individuals?
Well, I would say that it's a definite change, but it will really depend on what individual circumstances kind of dictate. So if someone is taking a specialty medication, they may see more impact than someone who's taking a preferred level medication. So it's kind of difficult to make an overall assessment, but, you know, it all depends on your circumstance.
Okay. Well, it just looks like it's going up like $15.
Right. Yeah, I would say.
Per prescription?
Yes.
Basically, or if it's a higher-end one, it's going up $25. Not totally a horrible jump, I guess, in, that's all. This was hard to understand. Is the bottom part 25 percent up to 250? I wasn't really, is that only, they can only get $250 worth?
No, it would be, that would be what it would be capped at. So up to 25 percent of the medication is what the cost will be. So if it's less than that, you could pay under 250, but it's just capped at 250.
So after 250, it's free?
Yeah. It's not.
It's capped. The most will pay, so if like.
Yeah, the most you'll pay is 250.
If a prescription's $1,000, they have to pay 25 percent of it, would be 250.
Be 250. Would it be the most?
If the prescription's $2,000, they're still only going to pay 250.
Gonna pay 250.
Now, mind you, if 250 from $55, if you have a monthly prescription, that is a sizable jump.
Yeah, it's 150, $45, yeah, or whatever. Okay. I just kind of wanted to get a better understanding of that prescription.
Alderman Dillie?
Yeah, one question. I considered bringing it up the last time when Alderman Bryce was talking, and I'm looking at the renewal summary here, and it's got the four options that we chose to implement or that we suggested implementation. And then at the top, it has the.
HRA funding?
Yeah, so it was my understanding of the first one didn't affect the, didn't affect the employees because it was covered by the HRA funding.
Correct.
The second one had an effect on the employees for $28,000. And then obviously the last two had an effect as well. And when we were talking about that, you had mentioned getting, with the savings that we projected here, it got us below, say, the last year's cost of healthcare, correct?
With the overall savings. So the plan itself, still with these changes, has like a 1.2 percent?
2.7.
2.7 percent increase from plan to plan, but then with the family advantage, with the money we're projected to save on that, that brings our overall health cost to overall savings from where we were previously.
All right. And listen to Lieutenant Rozeski. It sounds like there's a number of people that have a issue with the increased deductibles and out-of-pockets.
Yes. That's what he said, yes.
Right. If we were to not do that, not take the advantage of that, if I did the math right, that still gets us below, below the last year's healthcare costs?
No. So the overall savings, adding everything up, so our increase, we'll start with our overall increase last year was roughly $219,000, would have been an increase if we just stayed with what we had. By making the changes, including the family advantage plan, we have $257,000 in savings. Of that 257,000, 90,000 is changes in copays and prescriptions. So if you take that away, that 90,000, we're not going to, we would have an increase over last year's cost.
That's not the one I was talking about taking away.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought that's what.
The increased employee deductible and out-of-pockets.
Okay.
Which I think represents $28,000 savings, but if you were to get rid of that, that $28,000 savings, you're still below the last year's cost.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
If I'm dangerously doing math on TV here.
Yeah. Yeah, I went through it on paper here, but I think that's the case.
I'll trust you. All right, okay. Alderman Wolf?
Yeah, I don't know if I'm right or wrong. We're talking about the prescriptions here. Does that go to deductible?
Prescriptions do not, do they?
I'm pretty sure.
I think everything goes.
Sorry, the out-of-pocket max, not the deductible.
Now, is that covered? Because we have, like, we spend so much money, and then we have another fund to pay part of that money. Is that covered into that too, or no?
No. Prescriptions are outside of that.
Okay.
Yeah, the HRA doesn't, it just covers deductible expenses.
Okay.
Not like co-insurance or copays.
Okay, just want to double check on that. And then the other thing is, talking about the consultant, the consultant isn't only here to reduce coverage for people. If you look in the past, what they've done for us is they've reduced the cost of insurance for us, right? So like, we were supposed to have a 12 or whatever percent a couple of years ago, and they got it down lower, and then the same thing this year, they wanted, and they got it down to 9.5 percent, and then, so there's other factors involved with the consultant as far as saving money for them.
They argue on our behalf to the actual providers. They look, they provide us with data of how our plans match up against the comparables for other communities, not only other communities, but like the whole plethora of health insurance plans, both private and public. And then they segregate those also to how we are versus other public.
But they go to bat for us, like they did, they went back to the insurance.
They represent us.
And they got them to reduce it, right?
Correct.
So that's my point there, that I think that if we didn't have the consultant, we'd still be having this conversation about reducing benefits, if that's what you want to call it, but getting them more in line with what's really going on with everything. But the consultant, without the consultant, we probably would be paying more for insurance, and it would be, keep going up as well. So, you know, and you know me, I'm pretty skeptical on paying for consultants and stuff like that to give us advice on things, but in some circumstances, when they come through and they prove theirself, I think it's a good thing to have. But anyway, that's a couple of things I just wanted to point out.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I make a motion to remove the increase in employee deductible and out-of-pockets for the $28,000 savings?
And I'll second that.
Person, second. So the motion is to not increase the employee deductible from 250 to 500, 500 to 1,000, correct?
Correct.
Do we have a second on that? Discussion on that. Kate, will that impact anything? I mean, is any of this cumulative, like, if you change that, it's going to make a difference on how much we're saving on the, you know, the copay changes and everything else?
No, I don't believe, so they kind of, they piecemeal and quoted us on different plan design changes. So we would just have to find a way to absorb the $28,000 difference.
So.
And one other thing with, as far as could it affect something else on here? It may, just thinking, it may affect the number of people that go to the family advantage, but that's the only thing I can think of that it might do.
I don't want to get, and I don't want to get in people's heads, but I can't imagine that 250 is the part that's going to change them going or not going. I just, like I said, I'm not, I, I guess I want to respond to Lieutenant Rozeski's comments, and they're all true. I mean, I shouldn't say, no, they're not all true. He means they are. I'm not saying he's lying by any means, but we are not, I don't want to speak for you, but I think I can, I know most of you, that we value our employees, and we try to put a competitive package out there for all of them. We get all our work done through our employees, and we need them. We realize that. The $28,000 that you're changing in there, one of the things that we have to start doing is making everyone, ourselves included, better consumers of our healthcare. And that's one of the things that higher deductibles do, is that, and that's one of the things you will see, maybe not in this $28,000 now, but you will see it in your renewal, where people think twice about, this is going to, it's going to cost me, you know, another $250 by running to the ER or urgent care this weekend, when I probably could wait till Monday, or do a teledoc thing, or something like that. So just consider that. And, you know, I guess the other part is Jenny's going to be scrambling to come up with where the $28,000 is going to come from in the next agenda item, but I think we can do that, but this may be a one-year Band-Aid if you do it. So just realize that. Meaning I think you might be coming back next year and making the same change. Any further discussion? All those in favor, let's do a roll call vote on the motion to amend, to change the, to remove the increase of employee deductible from 250 to 500 and 500 to 1,000 for families.
Alderperson Wolf?
No.
Alderperson Hamel?
No.
Alderperson Decker?
No.
Alderperson Brace?
Yes.
Alderperson Schrader?
Yes.
Alderperson Dillie?
Yes.
And Alderperson Madden?
Yes.
That passes four to three. All right. Now, on the motion as amended, any further discussion on that? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Resolution 0632025, approval of the 2026 general fund, what are you pointing at? Did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Resolution 0622025, approval of the solid waste services contract for 2026-28 with GFL Muskego LLC for refuge and recycling collection.
Move to approve.
Second.
All the material. Discussion. Any questions on this? It's essentially renewing our contract with them, just extending it out. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Now, Resolution 0622025, 0632025, approval of the 2026 general fund operating budget and tax levy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Well, the first thing is, we got to come up with $28,000, so any suggestions on that first before we?
With some adjustments we had made maybe a month ago, maybe two weeks ago, we put $25,000 back into the reimbursement from water, so we can take that 25 back. So that only leaves us short about 3,000.
Does everyone understand that?
I thought that was 50,000 that you put back in from the library?
It was. It was, but then there was 25 that was taken back out at the last meeting for the trail maintenance.
For the what?
The trail, remember the trail maintenance we moved into operating?
Do we really need that?
I don't remember that, coming from that.
Trail maintenance in there for? Oh, we're borrowing 5 million for roads.
Well, and as we know, the road reconstruction and all that is a separate line item from the crack sealing, tiling, that's a whole different budget item. Ryan, want us to come up to the mic and answer some questions? So what do you need for maintaining the trails? For crack sealing?
Are we going to be shy of what we talked about two weeks ago?
Yes, what they're talking about taking it away.
Well, they're talking about not.
Taking it out.
Not taking, not moving it over, yes.
We can still do it. I mean, we've done more with less, so. These are minor repairs. Like I said, last time, it comes out of a road oils and asphalt maintenance budget, so the small little patches, that is just everyday operations, that's something that can't happen. My guys take care of it. We take care of everything in house. When it comes to bigger items, like I stated last time, we come in, we make a project out of it, like we do with the road program. At that point, after we finish our trail rating, then that's something that maybe comes out of capital, but we can still do it.
But we really don't need that at this time, that $25,000.
If it means going the other way, no.
You know, here's the dilemma, is that, you know, we're trying to create something for the future that we didn't do with the road program and kept up with it, $750,000 per year. And now we're trying to start something, and we're already vetoing it because we want to do something else, which is fine, I understand, but.
Separate budget, though.
But, you know, it's, we should have a line item in place and something there for it, and something dedicated to it, and that's something I was trying to accomplish so that we don't have to look at getting money later on for it. We already have it already in place and started, but that's fine. I don't want to put words in your mouth, though, but you're not saying if we take it out, you're not going to be able to do crack sealing and minor.
No, all I'm saying is, it would be nice to have it, right? I mean, we could get more done, but at the same time, for the last 10 years out of that road oils and asphalt budget that we currently have 100,000 for operating, we have maintained the trails. So if we get to a point after a trail rating when we come back and say, hey, we need more money, or, you know, we have 150 feet that needs to get full replacement, that would be something we'd have to look at. But we can absolutely maintain the trails with what we have.
So what's the amount you have now? 100,000 or?
100,000, which is road oils and asphalt, it's in our operating budget. It takes care of all of our asphalt patching, crack sealing, cullar replacements, trail replacement.
So we're talking about taking 25,000 out of that?
We asked for, the current one was going to be moved to 125,000 at Alderman Wolf's request. We would take that 25 back to offset the 28.
Alderman Schrader?
I have two questions that could maybe help with this. One is, was there, and I looked for it, and I was going to call you today, Jenny, but I didn't have, I ran out of time. Was there a $30,000 that was put somewhere for this consultant for the fire station? Is that somewhere in this budget?
No.
It's not in here?
No.
Okay.
It's for, this year we were talking about doing it. In 2025, not 2026.
So it was in the 2025, because we never approved that officially.
Well, you will approve it when we bring it forward with the consultant, and then you'll discuss it at that time.
Yeah, I don't recall that ever being approved, but.
But you weren't here, you left.
No. Okay. How do I get in that argument? And my other question is, and I went back and I watched the video, these roofs for the fire station, the 277, 720?
That's capital. We're talking about operating right now.
Oh, okay, well, all right, well, then I guess that would work, because I was going to say, take some of that, because they don't even know what they need to do with those roofs. I guess I watched that video twice, and I still don't see.
Again, capital.
Where they're.
So I guess the question. So I I guess the question here is that we approve, we're we're up to approve the budget with no um not knowing. I I don't know how we can approve the budget right now. We don't know where the money is coming from for the twenty.
The twenty eight thousand dollars.
Twenty eight thousand. And there's no motion to amend it to tell us where it's twenty eight thousand is coming from. So I don't know how we can vote on something unless we find twenty eight thousand dollars. And there's a motion to amend it. We can't approve this budget as it is.
So so right now, the conversation was to find to use twenty five thousand of it of the.
But we're missing three thousand if they do that. So we gotta find that. Other we gotta make a motion. We can't approve the the budget without the dollar amount matching.
Right. Correct. But this was the first chunk of that.
Yeah. No, I know. I'm just saying there was no motion to amend. We haven't even approved the first motion to get to the second. But anyway, I'm just letting you know where we're at.
I mean, the simple solution would be instead of the full twenty five twenty whatever she was talking about moving from water, do twenty five thousand from the road cra from the cracks towering thing and take three thousand from the water reimbursement. That would balance it. But that would have to come from one of you guys. Did you find anything else?
So why didn't we want to take the twenty five thousand right from the water? Was there a reason?
No.
Otherwise, we were just gonna take it from the finance training and conference budgets. I mean, it's three thousand.
Take it off. I mean, could we take twenty eight thousand right from water?
You can. Uh well, twenty you can take twenty five from water.
Twenty five.
And then you still got three thousand left. Then you could you could do twenty five from water is a reimbursable and then take three thousand from the roads and cracks.
Or either way, vice versa, whatever you guys want to do.
I would need a motion from somebody to do something.
I'll make that motion. Twenty five thousand dollars from water and three thousand dollars from uh the trails.
So re water utility will be reimbursing the twenty five thousand and then we'll do it will reduce the the cr the cracks, all that stuff for by three thousand.
Right, from twenty five to twenty two.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Discussion on that.
No, I I think it's a good policy since we reduced the road program to three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So you gotta remember there's three hundred and seventy five thousand that we used to have in there all the time. So that's my discussion.
Which again is separate from what we're talking about.
But I'm saying, but we're talking about keeping the trails on. So, okay, whatever.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion to am can I finish my thing? Um all those in favor of the motion to amend roll call vote?
Alderperson Wolf?
Yes.
Alderperson Hamel?
Yes.
Alderperson Decker?
Yes.
Alderperson Brace?
Yes.
Alderperson Schrader?
Yes.
Alderperson Dilghi?
Yes.
And Alderperson Madden?
Thank you. Now, the motion as amended. Any further discussion or changes? Roll call vote.
Alderperson Wolf?
Yes.
Alderperson Hamel?
Yes.
Alderperson Decker?
Yes.
Alderperson Brace?
Yes.
Alderperson Schrader?
Yes.
Alderperson Dilghi?
Yes.
And Alderperson Madden?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution zero six four twenty twenty five, approval of the twenty twenty six capital budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alderman Schrader?
The what I just spoke about, the roofs?
Yes.
Um again, I I watched that last meeting a couple times and I'm very unclear on it doesn't seem like Scott was I don't know if you want to come up here, Scott, but it didn't seem like he you really were comfortable with what kind of roof even that you were gonna be doing. It was this is all kind of like spitting.
Yeah, we 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 have to do some investigation.
So.
But the roofs, do the roofs need to be done?
Yes, the roofs do need to be done. I I'm I'm letting you know the roofs need to be done. I am going to have to come back to you and I got to tell you when we put the bid out and the specs, what type of roof we're gonna go with, we are going to make sure that we look at it. We just don't know what type right now. I I'm I'm sorry, this got dropped on July. We were out there a couple months ago with an architect looking at it. When we come up with the spit bids and specs, we have to run it past you anyways. And when and what type of roof will we look at? What we want to do is we want to make sure that whatever roof we put on there is the correct roof. It might not be like replacing kind because that would make not any more sense because that roof is thirty years old. We won't want to replace it in kind. We need to have a little bit more investigation before we know what it is, what type of roof.
But this is just a complete ballpark number.
The quotes that that were provided were replacing in kind. We had three or four quotes that the fire department got and they provided to us. Correct. This could be different. And I could say we don't want to go with this roof based off of what our consultants and what we look at doing. I I'm being fully honest with you. I'm I'm just letting you know. We have to do a little bit investigation and then bring it back to you. But I would not remove it from this because you're gonna have some problems with these two fire departments, with these two roofs. I'm just letting you know. They need to be replaced.
So it's just a placeholder. Could be more, could be less.
Correct. And I will have to come back to you. I'm hoping that they're both less and I hope I'm both that that I do not need to get more money from you. But they need to be on there. So so do they go out for bid or is this the fire department takes care of all this? We 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 will go out to bid. We have to create specs. It's publicly bid. Anything over twenty five thousand dollars. It's publicly used money. We have to create a whole specs. We have to publicly bid it. We have to do it through quest. Okay, I'm just double checking because we're doing the maintenance on their buildings, right?
So I don't have the contract for test corners in front of me, but there is a dollar amount in the contract that anything below that automatically just gets to them and it doesn't come back here. My request would be someone make a motion that this specific thing, regardless of the dollar amount, has to come back to council.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
And and we were planning on that anyways, for sure. I just want to get it out.
I just gotta make sure we're within compliance for our contract.
Yeah, because I like to like to see the quotes. Yeah.
Any Alderman Decker, before we vote on it, any?
Don't we need to make a determination as to the condition of this one wall first?
Well, th- this is just the roofs. The the wall is a separate item that was pushed down and it's ended a later date. It is not.
Roof needs to get done regardless.
Yeah.
We're not gonna be putting this is not a case where if we whatever we do with the wall is gonna maybe make that roof like wasted money. The roof has to get done regardless. The wall, we don't know what we're doing on that one yet because that that one's all over the board.
And and the thing is this, in theory, if we fix that roof, which needs to be done, hopefully that might solve some of the problems with the wall. Okay, that roof has to be done. Might as well fix that first and see what kind of effect it has on the rest of the building.
Alderman Decker? Why? We know the roof is the we know that we know the roof is bad. We know a solution for the roof means repl- repl- replace the roof some way. The wall, we have no idea what to do yet.
Fixing the roof might cause a problem with the wall.
Might solve.
Solve solve the wall. I I am hoping it doesn't cause a problem with the wall. I'm hoping it solves it.
Problem with the wall, yeah.
Or helps more.
Or 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 mitigate it.
Yeah.
Alderman Schrader, did you have?
Yeah, I I don't I don't know if this is gonna be like going. Do we have something on the floor we have to vote on?
Yeah, we have an we have a motion to amend right now.
Okay.
And that's.
Let's do that because.
Roll call vote. And this is this is the motion to make sure that if you approve the fire department roofs, it comes back to council before it gets spent.
Yeah. Okay, wait. Who I have that Madden.
Alderman Wolf made the motion.
Not here. We have a motion to amend.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. Who's second?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Here we go. Ready?
You're voting on the if if you do approve roofs, that it comes back to council because the fire contract, there's a dollar amount in there that once the budget's approved, they just get that money. A certain dollar amount, it does come back to us. I don't know where I'm I'm thinking it's higher than this dollar amount. But just to be safe, I'm asking for you guys to make the motion, which you did, that no matter what the contract says, it comes back to us.
And and Scott's gonna get the quotes.
Correct.
Versus the fire department.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
Alderperson Wolf?
Yes.
Alderperson Hamel?
Yes.
Alderperson Decker?
Yes.
Alderperson Brace?
Yes.
Alderperson Schrader?
Yes.
Alderperson Dilghi?
Yes.
And Alderperson Madden?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, the motion as amended. Did you have something else you wanted to add, Alderman Schrader?
Well, this is this is gonna be taking some of the money out of the roof. I'm gonna make a motion.
You can.
Okay. So I had a talk, a great discussion with Ryan. Um and I know some of you council members were at the tour of Ryan's DPW area recently. Um and he had indicated that in order to move forward with cold storage and anything over there that he needs to have a feasibility study. So I'm making a motion to take fifteen thousand dollars out of the roof money and use that towards a feasibility study for Ryan for cold storage. So we can start the motion for getting the cold storage for DPW and getting the ball rolling for that. Because the feasibility study is the first step, according to Ryan. And I did talk to him about some other, you know, like, oh, could he wait a year on the plow truck? Could this and he he cannot wait on the plow truck. I don't want to touch that. I get that.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Further discussion. Um I guess the one thing I'll just point out is we don't know where the roof is gonna be. So this fifteen may be just fine. Hopefully it is. We may be it may wouldn't have mattered because we're gonna have to come back for more money. It you know, just expect there's gonna be more conversations on these roofs. And it's not something we can put off too much longer. So we'll be find having to get creative on where that difference is gonna come from. Not against what you're doing, just letting you guys know. Ald Ald Alderman Hamel?
Sounds like no matter what, that roof is gonna have to come back to us for further discussion if we take out the fifteen or not.
Being clear that if I don't know what we have in there for roof offhand, but you know, if it's two hundred and forty five thousand and and we're lowering it to two thirty, that two thirty may be okay. It may come back and say it's a hundred and eighty and either way, you needed more money. But it's more, you know, it's just we're we're gonna have to and we're gonna have to find a way to fund it because it needs to get done.
Was your was that just an example? Because I I see the roof at two seventy seven seven twenty.
It was just an example. I said I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Yeah, I'm proposing lowering it to two sixty two. Fifteen thousand for.
Okay, we really need a second to really discuss this.
Alderman Dilghi seconded. Um roll call.
I was gonna ask a question um before the.
Sure, you can.
Roll call. Um when are we planning this DPW thing? Does it is that do we need that study in next year? I mean, I mean, we just did a tour. I don't know what the plan was. I have no idea what the plan is.
I mean, Scott can come up and I'll talk while he's coming up. There's a number of things long term that you should look at at the whole public works site. And cold storage is part of that puzzle. Long term, you know, we not saying we are, not advocating for we are, but if someday we have a municipal fire department, well, that impacts what kind of garage space we're gonna need out there for repairs. There's um you know, the salt shed and there's a number of moving parts out there that we don't want to just buy cold storage and put it here and then find out, oh, we should have really planned for this because now it's in a way of other things you want to do. So a feasible study is the right thing to do. It's a matter of, you know, do you want to do it next year? Do you want to do it the year after? I I mean, the study should be good for at least the planning part, the numbers, as far as what these extra things all cost, looking down, aren't gonna really matter anyway because, you know, costs change year to year. So the the accurate one might be for the cold for the cold storage, but whatever numbers they come up with for any other things are just they're they're kind of like your five year capital budget where you're looking five years out. It's really just an educated guess at that point. Um but the study should get done. It's just matter when you want to do it. So.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe the cold storage is in the five year capital plan for twenty twenty seven.
Could be.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is. It's in the five year feasibility study. It's more than just the cold storage, but that's one aspect. Like the mayor said, not late, fire department, we need bigger bays if we'd have to maintain the fire trucks. At some point, we have to look at our where we get our fuel, the tanks underneath the ground. I understand. I mean, it was pretty packed in there. I I get it. It's pretty packed. It's just smart planning. I didn't know what the timeline was because all we did was a tour and nothing was ever brought back. And there was really no discussions about this other than a line item on a budget. And and usually we have more more discussions on it. It's not that I'm against doing this. I just want to know what we're thinking as a city before we we go to the next level.
So so what I'm what I'm envisioning here, and if you guys see something different, speak up, we're allocating fifteen thousand dollars. I have no idea if it's gonna cost fifteen thousand dollars, five thousand dollars. We we haven't gotten numbers back from GRIF yet on what the actual study would be. Um before we actually commission the study, we'll bring it back to a call so you guys all know what the scope and coverage of all that is. And, you know, it it's just a placeholder for some some money. So when they do come back, you have something to you have some funds to work with on it.
It it makes sense. Just letting you guys know, this is a good thing to do if you want to plan any type of growth or cold storage over there.
One Alderman Schrader?
During the tour, they talked about the feasibility study being about ten grand, maybe fifteen. And again, I talked to Ryan about this and he thought we should be good with that fifteen. And um I I'm all about the roads and public works and safety. And I really feel like we need to move forward with this cold storage and getting everything on one location with all our beautiful, wonderful trucks that we're spending a lot of money on. So I think it's time to bite the bullet and move forward with all of this.
Um the one request I would make for you guys to consider at least is we we don't have any numbers on what it is. I mean, the the ten or fifteen is a guess. If for some reason our consultant comes back and says, okay, the feasibility study is five thousand dollars and you have that extra ten, can we allocate that towards the roof in case we need to? We're not gonna spend it unless we need to, but at least it doesn't fall back into fund balance for the following year. At least we can.
Yeah, that's fine.
So do can someone make that motion, please?
So um motion to allocate up to fifteen grand from from the test cor or from the fire department roofs towards the feasibility study.
And if there's any extra.
Any extra would go back to the roofs for the fire departments.
Don't we have to amend the motion that's already?
Well, we have to vote on the first one and then, right? I mean, we.
Well, she she's rema she's remaking her motion.
Okay, just so we're on the right page. Okay.
Second that. All right. Any further discussion on that? Roll call vote.
Alderperson Wolf?
Yes.
Alderperson Hamel?
Yes.
Alderperson Decker?
Yes.
Alderperson Brace?
Yes.
Alderperson Schrader?
Yes.
Alderperson Dilghi?
Yes.
And Alderperson Madden?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? All right. Can we get a roll call vote on the twenty twenty six capital budget, five year capital budget?
Alderperson Wolf?
Yes.
Alderperson Hamel?
Yes.
Alderperson Decker?
No.
Alderperson Brace?
The the budget is amended. Yes.
Yes. Alderperson Schrader?
Yes.
Alderperson Dilghi?
Yes.
And Alderperson Madden?
Yes.
He wants to change his vote.
Yay. Consideration here?
Just change your vote. Just announce it. Now say you're correcting your vote.
Was I wasn't clear on what we were voting on. So yes.
So it's unanimous. Let the record reflect. Thank you. All right. Resolution zero six five twenty twenty five, approval of the twenty twenty six sewer utility budget and rates.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Any questions?
Wait, what did you say sewer budget and?
The sewer.
And and rates and the rates. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Roll call vote.
Alderperson Wolf?
Yes.
Alderperson Hamel?
Yes.
Alderperson Decker? Alder Person Decker?
Yes.
Alder Person Bryce?
Yes.
Alder Person Schrader?
Yes.
Alder Person Dilghi?
Yes.
And Alder Person Madden?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 066, 2025, approval of the 2026, uh, is that sewer? Did I just do that wrong?
Water.
Water, okay, so water utility, the last one was the sewer utility. I had it right. 2026 water utility budget and rates.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Alder Person Wolf?
Yes.
Hamel?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Dilghi?
Yes.
And Madden?
Yes.
As is unanimously, thank you. Discussion regarding interest rate reduction and payment plan request regarding rec charges for warrior wash. So typically this would have gone to finance and discussed there and then brought here and re-discussed. So I just figured I'm just going to bring it here. If you remember earlier this year, we went through all the outstanding rec charges for different businesses out there. And I don't know, Jeff, you want to go through this and go through the dollar amount on what we were talking?
You're sure on this? On this particular one, um, the amount owed is 100, as of today, $111,300. They have hired an attorney and their attorney has gone to, was it Public?
Public Utility, or Public Works and Safety.
Right, and had asked to see if this could be either reduced or forgiven. And that was denied. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so now, um, nothing's really happened on it since then. But their attorney contacted me, um, pretty much in about the last week and said that they're trying to see if, um, we would, if the council would consider either any kind of a payment plan for them or a reduction in the interest rate. The interest, you know, the way she explained it is about $9,000. That that's just kind of a big burden on them. And all I told her is that I'd have to really go to you guys and see what it is that you'd want to do. So what, it's just really a discussion today. I don't, there's no resolution or anything. It's just a discussion as to are there any ideas that I could go back to her with that you guys would consider to do for them? So she wrote down on a payment plan or something to that effect, the interest charge or something to that effect.
Currently, our interest rate is 9%? 8%? Currently, our interest rate is 8%. This, this particular one is a little different than most rec charges. Normally, when you buy a property through, you get a title closing report and it goes through and it tells you all the outstanding, you know, numbers that are due on this. This one was bought out of foreclosure. So there's more risk involved in that, I get that. But they also weren't expecting a $100,000 bill coming to them. We can't waive the bill. I mean, that, that, I mean, yes, we can. I don't recommend you do that. That's, that'd be a bad, horrible precedent. One of the things you might want to do is allow them to give like a 10-year repayment on it with, you know, a much smaller interest rate on it. That I think would make the city, the water utility whole still, while showing some, you know, I guess compassion for one of our businesses. So what you guys do, it's up to you, but I just, I thought we'd bring it here and let you guys discuss it.
It's coming up now because this would be going on their tax bill, was it November 15th? They're supposed to have paid by the end of October and then it goes on the bill November 15th. So they're scrambling right now to try to figure out if there's some way they can make it work with some kind of reduction from you guys.
Alderman Hamel?
Can they make like a larger upfront payment in the resco on a payment plan? Do you know?
Don't, don't know yet.
I don't know.
I think that would be a reasonable solution.
I'll, I'll take anything you guys want to do back to them. I'm just, this is just a point where I'm trying to figure it out.
Alderman Wolf?
When did they buy this property?
I don't know.
Not within the last year. It's been a couple of years or something.
17, 18, 2018.
And because we came in with the new, with, we've defined our policy or we, or how do we, how do we get to 111,000?
Schrader can probably attest, you buy something out of foreclosure, it's got a different reporting.
Yeah, you, if you, it's kind of buying a grab bag sometimes. You're not sure exactly what you're getting. I do, I think we've had this discussion before. I'm just looking through, I didn't see anything in it. Do we have anything to look at on this? Were we given any handout or any?
No, it's just a discussion.
I mean, it's hard to have a discussion when you don't have anything to look at and you can't see all the charges and you can't see all the interest and you can't see what you guys are talking about. So it would be helpful to include this stuff in our packets and/or have it handed out to us so we can have a.
Noted, okay.
A discussion.
Anything else on it?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know how to make a suggestion without looking at the numbers and looking at the.
We can give you the numbers and we, there's an interest rate involved.
There's no interest at this point.
That's what my next question was.
It would be assessed each year that, as it goes to the tax roll on the unpaid balance.
I can make a copy of this.
Well, I, I can make a suggestion here to get things rolling in the right direction, I suppose. If we're, we're trying to save the business and help it out and if that's the case, you'd make it equitable for them. We're not here to make it profitable for them. I mean, that's something that we don't do. But if, if we can suspend the interest for a year and then, I mean, that's kind of what I'm thinking. And then get some type of a payment program going if that helps them. I don't know, what, what is the payment? Isn't, didn't we do five-year right now? Isn't that what it is?
Yeah, so it's a five-year option right now. We would, I, I think.
At 8%, is it?
Yes, at 8% right now. And one of the proposals that was floated out there would be a 10-year at a lower interest rate.
Or, or one year no interest and five-year payback and would that be equitable?
Well, the one fear is I don't want to make it complicated for us either. So something consistent and locked in would probably be best.
Whatever you guys decide then.
Either way, this is going to come back. I just need.
Right, it's just a idea.
I need some framework on where to start and I have no idea what you guys are thinking on this. Alderman Decker?
Isn't this going to open up a can of worms of disparate treatment of other businesses?
It's, this is an odd one.
It's such a unique situation.
It's a unique situation. I haven't seen this before and, you know, people can always point to something.
But when you buy a foreclosure property, you, you, you get what comes with it, right?
It is buyer beware, I get that.
Yeah.
It's, it, it's an option. It's something that I can't say we've done since I've been here. I couldn't tell you if it's done previously. I know it had been done 20 years ago in rare instances. But, you know, I, it's, you have the ability to do it if you want, you don't have to.
Yeah, because a rec charge never changes. It's that they owe that 100 and whatever and that's it.
Well, the rec charge grows over time.
If they use more whatever, right?
Yeah, I mean.
But other, other than this charge.
What a rec costs now is cheaper than what it will cost two years from now.
Right.
It does escalate.
So I, I could have done this the reverse way, meaning I negotiate with their attorney and then come to you. I reversed it on this one because I didn't want to have to come to you and then go back to her. I figured if I could get an idea at least of where you're going, then I'll go to her and then I'll come back to you.
I mean, we can throw it back at them and have a proposal for you guys to react to if you're more comfortable with that.
I think we just won.
Alderman Hamel?
Throwing a proposal. I would make a proposal. Do you need an amendment or a motion or just a proposal?
Just kind of, I mean, we're, we're okay with consensus. It's coming back to be beat up and debated again in a resolution anyway.
I would say repayment over 10 years at 6%.
Okay.
I don't know if that's.
Which is the consensus on it. Alderman or Madden?
If we, if we push it out 10 years and five years from now they sell it, what happens?
You can, you can make that part of your thing where it's due upon sale.
Right.
Okay.
It's a good point.
Could do that.
Are you just looking for permission from us to?
Right, to go to her. Something.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what to say other than I, I have no problem with you guys negotiating for a lower interest rate or a payment plan. No, no issue with that.
So right now I've got like, I mean, are you guys okay with like a 10-year 6% type thing? Is there any objections to that?
Payable on sale.
Alderman Decker?
Could you restate what our, what our standard agreement was with the other, other companies?
Five years, 8%. So do I have consensus on this? All right, this will come back. We don't need any action today.
Just an idea.
At least we have somewhere to start. Thank you. All right, moving on. Discussion and, uh, discussion with possible action regarding the funding of the Hillendale Water Project. So this was the subject of, uh, public comment tonight. It's been discussed a number of times throughout. So we're, I don't want to go into what was talked about in closed session. So what we did in closed session is we talked about the where, how, how we got there. And then we also talked about where the funding for this, on top of the ARPA funding, the 2.6 million debt lines that we had allocated already for the project, was going to come from. The discussion in closed session regarding that part of it was to use the recommendation and the consensus and approval at that time in closed session was for, to use water utility fund balance from the WCAs because that, that, those are specifically for water infrastructure expansion. Now, there's been argument behind the scenes for months now of was that proper? Was it? I have talked to numerous attorneys, League of Municipalities. The district attorney has even weighed in on this. And at this point, where we're at, no one has a solution of how to move forward because you can't make a budget amendment on a 2024 budget in 2025 with a council that doesn't exist anymore. You guys are different. The recommendation that we can do, and we did, we talked about this publicly after the fact. We've talked about it, it was posted on social media, it was talked about at our, at, at our council. I apologize, I take responsibility for what happened on this. I should have caught it. There are checks and balances in the system that we all go through on, on this. And part of that is voucher approval and making a number of other things. It, the system failed, I failed us. I thought this was done, but to get past the, can you or can't you do this in an open session? I'm here today talking about this in open session of we have this roughly million dollars that needs to be funded from this that we have already transferred and spent from the water utility, which is probably where this would have come from anyway. I, I am guaranteeing it that that's where it was going to come from. This project was not over budget. It was, it was actually came in less than the number we always talked about. That is well documented. So I guess all we can do at this point is get consensus or a vote of some sort from this council to approve either the water utility usage of these funds or some other funds that would have to come from fund balance from property tax money, which I don't recommend, but it's your choice. Alderman Decker?
I'd like to make some comments and this is kind of picking up on Mr. Dickman's comments earlier. The total cost of the Hillendale project was $3,764,499.75. The ARPA funds that had been allocated were $2,630,006.78. On May 23rd or on May 9th of 2023, there was a resolution 036, 2023, which established the uses for the ARPA funds in the amount of $2,630,006.78. It basically earmarked those funds for use of the Hillendale project and Test Corners at the time.
Well, wait, I'm going to correct you before we get too far down this rabbit hole. It was allocated for the Hillendale project and if anything was left over towards, and that's specifically in the resolution. You can continue now.
Yeah, I have a copy of the resolution and it, it, it was, establishes the uses, the resolution establishes the uses for the American Rescue Plan Act Grant Fund, which is the ARPA fund. And it was for $2,630,006.78. And it's, it basically states that the common council.
But what does it actually say? You said basically. Read what it actually says.
The common council, now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the City of Muskego upon the recommendation of the committee of the whole, does hereby appropriate out of the ARPA funds of the City of Muskego to the Hillendale Drive Water Main Project and any remaining funds to the Test Corners Bridge Project, Stormwater Drainage. The design of both projects will be in 2023 and 2024, with construction taking place in 2024, 2025, and 2026. Again, that was voted on and passed by the common council on May 9th, 2023. The only other resolution that has occurred in relation to any of this money was a resolution 067-2, 2023, on October 10th, 2023, in the approval of the 2024 capital budget, which included $1 million of ARPA funds.
No, it did not.
It says it right here.
Yeah, no, I, I, I know what the, the budget essentially approved nothing because it had already been allocated via that resolution. That's where the whole error came into it. And we can't go too far into it because we're going to be going into the closed session part of it. But the budget approved nothing. So there was nothing, the only funding that we had approved on this was the 2.6 from the May 2023 resolution.
Well, again, the 2024 capital budget approval included 1 million of ARPA funds.
1 million or 2?
1.
Wow, I, since it didn't, it really didn't approve anything. Regardless, go on with your point, okay.
I can read you from the minute if you want.
Just go on with your point.
Okay. The point is, we only did a subsequent resolution to approve just 1 million of the funds. There was, there's still $1,630,006.78 that needed to be approved, which it never was. There's another million from the water utility that never was approved by resolution. There's also $102,942.33 from the capital expenditure fund that was never approved by resolution. And then finally, there's $31,550.64 from the sewer utility fund that was never approved by resolution. I'm saying that because of all the delay that occurred, we were trying, we've tried for a long time to get this on a hearing.
Agenda.
And, and we were blocked every step of the way. So it.
What do you want to do?
These should have been approved a long time ago. And we've tried to get them approved and I don't know why, why we've been obstructed in doing this. But it, it, it's bad practice for, you know, we just approved essentially 1 million of the ARPA funds in a resolution on October 10th, 2023. We should have approved, we should have approved the other stuff.
I, I argue that that didn't happen, but we already had, we had 2.6 approved. Either way, we were short and this thing, I'm not arguing that this was handled correctly. And I've done, you know, I, there's, there's a number of failures that the system had on this and it shouldn't have happened and it should, there's, you know, going back to last April when this was all talked about then, there's a ton of things that I would never, ever do again, the way this happened. It, it was woefully, you know, inadequate. However.
We never had a vote last April.
Can you let me finish? $2.6 million of this was approved already. But let's just say a dollar was approved. There was nothing hidden, there was, there was no ill will here. We, we've always, we talked about this very openly before you were on council and the, and the main thing was before you were on council, that it was going to be a $4 million project. That was the conversation all along. We ended up coming in under budget on that, but regardless, we did not, the, the budget, there was, there were some errors through the budget process that should have been caught. I completely agree with that. I didn't catch them. This council didn't catch them. It was also approved, I mean, this council also approved the bid for this, awarded the bids a few months later with no money for it. Because, so.
Excuse me?
No. You'll get your turns. So this whole thing wasn't handled right. We know that. But there was, there was no misleading the public on this with any dollar amount or anything. At the end, we used ARPA funds and water utility funds, which you may change your mind today on it, but we did talk about that in closed session. And the argument is, was that proper or not? I'm not even going to argue that because that's why we're here today. Let's just get this thing done with. Where do you want to go now? Alderman Schrader.
Well, excuse me, but it was never voted on in April. And when I was president of the council last year, I was alerted by the finance director of the error. We went into your office to talk about the error and you threw us out of your office.
Um, we're not going to go into the closed session part.
That wasn't closed session.
No, you're talking about employees right now. We're not going to go into that.
This was an open session. You admitted it. It was you that threw me out of the office.
Well, I did throw you out of the office because it was a subject matter that we weren't supposed to be, I clarified.
He was trying to bring this to the council, to bring it out for transparency.
No, that was.
And you wouldn't allow it.
That was not the case.
It was the case.
That was not the case.
It's still the case.
Jenny, I have, okay, I have witnesses of what was here, and we're not going to discuss employee conversations in an open session. Okay?
We've been trying to discuss this for over a year and you've been shutting it down.
Okay, we're done.
What do you guys want to do?
What do you guys want to do with this?
We need to vote on this properly with the whole council and have all these.
What do you guys want to do? Alderman, Alderman Hamel.
Make a resolution on something that has already been done, completed, paid for. What I would like to do is make a motion to acknowledge that the funds from the Hillendale project came from ARPA, the majority of it, came from ARPA, and the, um, the rest came from the water fund, which was discussed in the closed session.
Alderman Schrader.
That is not true where all the funds came from. They did not all come from the water fund. There is not an exact accounting anywhere with resolutions accompanying that, them on how all the funds were spent and where all the money came from. And it needs to be properly done with the full council for transparency.
We have a motion on the floor.
I would just like to make a comment here. We've been going back.
Wait, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Fine. I'll second.
What was the motion?
I made a motion to acknowledge that the funds.
Oh, you made a motion, okay.
For the Hillendale project came from ARPA and the remaining funds came from the water fund, which was discussed in the closed session.
Second.
Okay. Alderman Madden.
This has been going back and forth for months now. And the only thing I haven't heard is how are we going to get this closed? We don't have the same council here from when that, so who's going to, it, it's not, how is that going to be legal? It's done. It's paid for. Why can't we end it?
Because when you're spending over a million dollars of people's money, there needs to be a resolution that accompanies it. Do you know how our purchasing policy works?
Bob just gave it.
Wait, we're not debating between yourselves. If you have comments, make them. You just made it. Anyone else? Alderman Decker.
I've laid out here what, what I feel needs to be done. I think we need to do a proper resolution dealing with the 1, 1.6 million roughly of the remaining ARPA funds that were not officially approved. And the 1 million.
We're discussing. We're discussing the motion to amend. You can bring that up after that. The motion to amend is out there.
What are we amending?
All right, I'm sorry. The motion, I'm sorry, not the motion to amend. We're discussing the motion that's on the floor. The motion right now on the floor is, yeah. Well, he can make a motion to amend. That's true. So are you making a motion to amend?
Yes.
Okay. Then say that.
Well, the motion hasn't been approved yet. It hasn't been seconded yet.
No, but before you vote on it, it, it has been seconded. So we're just waiting. He can make a motion to amend. So make your motion.
I motion that we, that a resolution be drawn up, giving proper approval for the remaining funds that were not approved by common counsel. for the ARPA fund that remained, 1 million from the water utility, 102,942.33 from the capital expenditure fund, and 31,550.64 from the sewer utility fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion to amend. I will tell you, he's wrong on that. We have 2.6 million dollars that has been approved. Everyone, I'll tell you, that is the one thing that the league, the district attorney, our in council, has told me. We have 2.6, I don't care what you're saying is on the budget. The budget essentially, they're all agreeing, didn't do anything. So we have 2.6 million dollars in approval. I'm not arguing if you're going to make this resolution. I don't care what you guys do. You can do what you want on this. I want it to go to bed, but we're going to do a resolution that's proper if you do it. Alderman Wolf.
Is that the total amount, 2.63, whatever, some change?
Yes, the ARPA funds, the money that's been approved so far has been 2.6.
And that's the amount that you're looking for, Dennis, on a, on a, are you looking for more?
No, I'm, it's not even that.
I, I, I gotta clarify this because I.
He's arguing that we have, we have approved 2.6 million when we have. It's semantics. It's stupid. But we're, we gotta have the numbers right.
Well, I think he's looking, if I understand, if I understand what he's doing is he's looking to approve the water funds on, be included in it. I, I'm trying to follow this whole thing 100%. So I, I gotta have some clarity. If, if we go to resolution, you're looking for what total dollar amount?
I, I know it's, I know it's confusing, yes. It got all muddled. But originally, the ARPA funds were approved, but it was, it was in the form of resolution establishing uses for the American Rescue Plan Act Grant Fund. That was for 2,630,006.78. But then later, there was a second subsequent resolution, another resolution in later that year in 2023 that earmarked specifically 1 million for ARPA funds.
Okay. And it's. What resolution?
So that puts us at, so I'm following along here. That puts us at 3.6 roughly. How much, we gotta, I, I want to get to the total dollar amount that he wants, the total dollar amount that was spent.
It's like 3.7 something.
3.76.
And all the numbers he gave are where the money was spent from.
That, that's fine. I, I, I understand this. But if we're going to just do a resolution, let's just do it for the dollar amount. And you can give them this. They can put it in the notes. And it'll be done. And let's just vote on it and, and push it through and be done with this.
I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to have a chance to write up the resolution to, to break it out in terms of the ones, 1.630, 06678 for ARPA, 1 million for the water utility, 102942.33 for the capital expenditure fund, and 31550.64 for the sewer utility.
Okay.
That's what I'd like.
And where do these numbers come from?
Those are numbers I gave them at some point this year.
Okay, so these are the numbers we're looking for. We're just looking for an approval. Is this correct here?
We have a first and a second on the, on the motion to amend.
And just so we can all understand where we're at, this is gonna.
Will this, put this to bed?
Well, this, I, I'm going to ask as, as each person listening, this is going to make everybody happy? Yes or no? Or are we looking for something else?
Are we going to vote on this?
That's, that's, I would think that we would want to put this to bed somehow. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know. I'm trying to follow this all along. I, I was the one who started all this, I believe, during the budget process. And, and, and I had some interaction with Sharon when she was here as the finance director that kind of got us on this path here. And if we spent 3 point, I'm going to use 6 million, what, 7 million, whatever you said it was, and we can show where it came from, and we were asking for a resolution to put it to bed.
That's fine.
Do we need something else? Or do you want me to keep going further and deeper into this? Or what, what, what do we want to do?
I'd like to answer.
Go ahead.
What we should have done.
I understand that.
We know what we should have done. We were well aware what we should have done.
But that's all been, that's all been, that's all been explained here. So if there's something else you want to add to this.
What do you want to do? Not what should have been done. We realize this was handled.
I feel a lot of splitness in this.
A resolution, I, I've stated again, a resolution for approval of the 1,630,006.78 for ARPA from the ARPA funds, resolution for 1 million from the water utility. The resolution will also state the cap, uh, 102,942.33 from the capital expenditure fund. And finally, 31,550.64 from the sewer utility fund. Now, when you add that all up to the 1 million that, that was approved back, back in April 10th, October 10th of 2023, that will equal the total cost of the Hillendale project to the penny.
All right, we have first and a second. Please approve this.
Hold on. Jenny, are those numbers correct?
From what I can recall.
And, and then the other thing is that you're, I don't know how many resolutions Alderman Decker's ever written, but.
No, he's not writing it. We will use that information.
All right, that's what I thought. He said he wanted to write it.
Denny, pass that paper to her with the numbers on it.
All right, any further discussion on this? The motion to amend, all in favor, say aye.
Wait, I have a question.
Yes.
If we just say yes, do we ever have to listen to this again? That's all I want to know.
That's what Rob asked and didn't get an answer on it.
Yeah, do I have to listen to this again if I say yes?
Well, we'll be approving, we'll be approving the resolution for the money.
Deb, specifically.
We're going to approve the resolution for the money already spent.
Well, because you keep.
I want an honest and transparent council and mayor.
Would this give you the answer? And I don't have to hear Hillendale again?
I don't know. It's a street in our city. I'm sure you're going to hear it again. What a ridiculous question.
No, you know exactly what it is.
Enough. All right, guys, grow up. You, except for the people that weren't in office at the time, you all have dirty hands on this. I'm taking responsibility. I should have caught it. But you, each of you that were any part of this, approve the, the bid itself. Vouch, get your hand down. We're done with this. We're going to take a vote. The, the.
If you're going to call me dirty.
All those in favor, say aye.
Mic's turned off. Oh, thanks, Rick.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? You're opposed?
No, no, I, I, I have a comment. I have a comment.
Okay, now, that was just to amend the motion. Any further discussion on the motion as amended?
Rick, I, I do take offense to saying that I'm dirty, but just, I'm going to leave it at that. I'm just going to, you're going to point that out. You gotta, you gotta be careful what you say up here. Because I never said that about you, okay? So it, it was kind of directed to me. If, I'm taking it personally. If everybody else doesn't, that's fine. But I just want to point it out. Just so we move on and, and we don't do that again, so.
Noted.
And can I make one comment? That just putting something on your Facebook that's only allowed to be seen by a certain amount of people is not a public disclosure of an error that was not publicly disclosing this.
My Facebook is completely unlocked.
No, you deny people, you deny people to be friends, so it is not completely.
Just because I don't accept people that I don't really care for to be a friend, doesn't mean they have access to everything on there. But let's just.
Well, that's not a transparent disclosure.
We have a motion amended. It's on the floor. All those in favor, the motion as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Jesus.
What? Can I have a stab at writing this with your, with your help? No.
You're not writing it. He is.
All right.
First reading of ordinance, a second reading of rules.
Can I make a quick comment, Rick? As long, Jeff, as long as you're writing it, break it down on the numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's all, so that it matches what we talked about, so that we're, we're, we got it all. Okay, thanks.
Reading of ordinances and second reading if rules are waived. Ordinance 1505, ordinance to amend the zoning map, M2 to PD slash Enterprise Drive. Yeah, that, that's correct. Any information, this is the subject of the public hearing that we had earlier tonight. Any information you need before the second? If you do have any contact, Adam, and we'll get that information to you. What?
I do have one quick question on that. Is, and Adam, is he still, you are still here. Is, is there a precedent? I mean, is there, do you have a list of other businesses that we've done this before? For how recently have we done this?
We have over.
Sorry.
Okay, we have over 50 or 60 planned developments in the city. So this is nothing new. These are used statewide. I think nationwide. This is not something special. This is basically a different option than if they would have gone for a variance. Variances to me aren't as clean. Variances are a lot harder to get approved just because of the statutory requirements. They're not clean. They're not business friendly even slightly. So if there's even the slightest interest of being business friendly, the plan development is by far the cleanest tool to use. Perfect example, Improv. Improv's campus, so bigger, unique campuses. Most of Improv's campus, planned development. So perfect example of someone in that park that has it, that's been growing and expanding.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? All right, license approval. Approval of a change of agent, Don Ball for a Class A liquor license held by Walgreens Corporation, DBA Walgreens, 07603, located at South 79 West 18885 Janesville Road.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, it's approved unanimously. Approval of a change of agent, Omar Forster Rollin for Class A liquor license held by Walgreens Company, DBA Walgreens, 11636, located at South 70 West 15775 Janesville Road. Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved unanimously. Any updates from any of the liaisons? Alderman Dilke, were you at the last council, uh, festival meeting by chance? All right, try to make the next one if you can on that one. I'll talk to you later about that. Need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Alls in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, adjourned at 6:40, or sorry, 7:46.